This is John Polster with Innovation Transportation Solutions. He's been working for the city for about four years now, helping us knit the funding through Tech dot and all the obstacles that we're having to try to get our project on 377 going. And because of the relationship we have with him and what great work he's done for us, the county embarked on his services to provide leadership in what they're attempting to take care of. So I asked him to come and share with us about the county bond program and let the council ask a few questions if they have any, and we'll go from there. Thank you for coming, John.
Thank you. I love Granbury. It's great to be here once you get here. So I'm gonna go over our bond program, and it's both the road and the jails, and then I'll take any questions. Where do I point? Anywhere?
Try her. That's where her computer is. Maybe it'll click.
Is it the bottom button?
There, it went.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So yeah, so this program started, we met with all of the communities within the Hood County area, the affected folks, then we asked them what their hopes, desires, and dreams were, and then we came together and then... And so a lot of the work had been done. We actually started working for the county in July. So going from July 1st to August 12th for a call-in election, you can imagine there was a whole lot of legwork that had to be done. But a lot of the reasons why this bond program was something that the county started working on is because of the fact that the condition of the roads that you live in, you already know. But there's a... The crown is growing, the traffic is increasing. These roads were designed mostly for farm-to-market, and their repair is in a less-than-positive state. So Hood County population as a whole is trending, has been going up, average rate of 2% in the early years. We're now moving closer to 9% over the last four years, and we've seen a 37.5% growth in Hood County since COVID. So from 2020 to 2024, this is basically just saying the same thing, the population grew between 63 to 89%, and then from '24 on, it was... It grew 9% over that four-year period. So the rest of the growth in the United States during that 2020 to 2024, we went and looked, the rest of the United States was growing at less, just a little over 1% over that four-year period. So we're outpacing the country as a whole. Okay, so why? One of the things we get all the time is, is we've got some Tech dot roads, and Granbury, y'all are the poster child for helping. The same work y'all are doing on 377 is what the county wants to continue to do on other roads. And the reason why the local government's getting involved with helping the state on their roads is because the majority of the traffic in your community typically drives on state facilities. Federal funding has been falling over the last eight years. State funding has not kept pace with inflation. So the legislature, when you talk to your delegation, will say, "We gave you $7, $8, $9 billion for your region last year. We're giving you $7, $8, $9 billion this year." But they don't account for the fact that over from '22 to '24, there's been a 70% increase in the cost of project construction. So it's not keeping pace with inflation. I need to go back. And the gasoline tax rate has not been changed in 32 years. So when you buy a gallon of gas, if it costs you $3, you're paying 38 cents a gallon in taxes. 20 cents goes to the state, 18 cents goes to the federal government. Of that, 18 cents every dollar we give to the federal government, we get about 77 cents back. Whether you're paying $3 a gallon of gas, or $4 a gallon of gas, or $5 a gallon of gas, you're paying 38 cents, and that hasn't been adjusted since 1994. So try to imagine what you were making in 1994, and see if you can live on that today. So one of the reasons why we wanted to get Hood County involved is because Hood County's part of the Fort Worth district. The Fort Worth district has 10 counties in the district. One of those counties is Tarrant County, so they're the big coon in the playground. But there's also 25 districts statewide, and we just met with the Highway Commission Chairman yesterday, and the prospect is not getting any better. And so what, basically the message he gave us yesterday is a message that we all know, is that if you're not in the game, helping them deliver their projects, then they're gonna go where people are helping them. And let me go back, sorry. And what we've done before, and what we're continuing to do now, when you look at the bond program, every dollar we spend from the county level, we anticipate to get an additional $4 back from the state. So we're usually in for about 20% of the cost total, and 80 cents on the dollar comes back from the Fed. So that's the leveraging. We don't just spend a dollar to get it to efficiently. We spend that dollar in a manner that'll leverage $4 back from the state and the federal government. So people don't realize there's a regional government. That North Central Texas Council of Governments, they manage the funding, transportation funding for 16 counties. If you're not playing in the game with them, they can't help you as much. So we partner with Tech dot, the city. Granbury's been the poster child for getting involved and helping with the state and MPO, COG, to get funding earmarked towards projects we need. And now the county's coming in into the game as well. Okay, seems like I'm beating this horse hard. But one of the things on the road bond side is you got dog years, people years, and highway years, right? So we can feather in, it's the county's debt service, which I'll talk about a little bit more of that in a second, in a manner that minimizes any of your tax impacts, because we can keep it under your current INS. And so our growth rate in the last four years has been at 9.2%. And right now, the financial team calculates that their worst-case scenario is they're gonna assume after 2029, the county's growth rate doesn't go any higher than 1.22%, and we're growing at 9.2. So all of our assumptions on our tax debt service are based on really conservative issues, and we feel very confident that we're gonna be able to overperform on all of those metrics. Okay, so if I'm gonna talk about the jail for two slides real quick, because there's two propositions, Prop A is a jail, Prop B is the roads. The county went and hired a accounting firm to go calculate. They assumed they would issue the debt in '27, and 20-year note, so you're talking about '47. So over that 20-year period, they calculated the cost for status quo, which is, don't do anything, keep sending your inmates out of county for other counties to house them, and being at the mercy of whatever they choose to charge you. They just went up almost double last year, which made the whole jail issue that much more viable, versus issuing a $24 million bond, adding the beds, and keeping the inmates in county. So over the '27 to 2047 status quo, the county, at some assumed rates of at least what we're paying now, with some increases over time, would pay about $251 million for the use of sending those inmates out of county for housing. The jail expansion is a $24 million note, but if you'll note that 31 million in that light blue, that's including the debt service for the 20-year period that that note's on the books. So that's 31 million. 178 million is what it costs them to run the jail with the inmates in county. They don't have to transport them. They don't have to go grab them from Johnson County or Ehrath County and bring them back, transport them. It's a lot safer. In that scenario, the county over that same 20-year period, if they build a jail, save the taxpayers $42 million over that 20-year period. So it's actually a savings to the county. So that's the jail, Prop A. So I said a lot of the work was done by the time we got on board with the county. They had gone through, met with Granbury, all the cities within Hood County, and talked about their thoroughfare plan, incorporated it into a countywide thoroughfare plan, and then they went and met with the North Central Texas Council of Governments, which is that regional government, that you have to get your plan on their plan in order for your roads to be eligible for their funding. So Hood County went through all that process, started back early in '24, I'm gonna get on that, and it resulted in this map. So '24 is when they started. They hired Tignal to do the thoroughfare, master thoroughfare plan, and they adopted it in March of 2025. Through that process, they went and met with the North Central Texas Council of Governments to not only model and to provide the county with what they think the roads need to be in 2050, because the NPO's always looking 20 years out. So when you give them a thoroughfare plan, they're currently in the mobility 2050 time range. So they project out, and they show you what roads you need in 2050 based on your demographics. So between July 11th and August 6th, we had workshops at Hood County. We went out and met with some of the communities, and we started iterating the bond program. We met with COG to get their idea on what projects they wanted to see us do. We met with Tech dot to see what projects they wanted us to do. And on August 12th, Hood County Commissioners Court voted to call elections for both the jail at 24 million and the roads at 125 million. So you can't see it, but I'll... We can get this to you. It's also on the county's website. I'll point that out in a second. We picked four on-system projects, and then five off-system projects, but we're going federally environmentally clear. On-system is a state road. If it has a number, US 377, F and whatever, those are state roads. The roads on the second tier, off-system, are off-system projects, but we're building them at a high enough classification that they warrant funding from the NPO with federal dollars. It's a classification issue, not who owns it. So all these projects are gonna be environmentally cleared, so we can go after that 80 cents on the dollar from the feds and state. And so there's nine projects. So we put together a map. We tried to be as geographically sensitive to the county and to also hit the critical mass projects that the NPO and Tech dot asked us to look at. You'll note, in the middle, is the US 377 Tech dot blue job. That job is the $127 million breakout at 377 and 144. It's fully funded, and we're looking at somewhere between November and December of 2026 for that project to go under the knife and go to construction. And the county, the city, and Tech dot, and the NPO have a plan to extend those improvements further east with the certain different phases of construction and planning. And the county didn't put on the bond program, because all the advanced planning's been done, all the engineering's done, and all we're now doing is working with them to get the utilities relocated, the roadway bought, and then get into the line for construction. So one of the first projects we looked at is what we've done in past areas, is this is from Granbury over to Toler. We are taking intersection that have congestion, and we fix the congestion to hotspots, and then later, it's easier for the state to come in and build the main lanes or the general purpose lanes in between those intersections, because the intersections are the most expensive and difficult to do. So we are in for putting in the environmental clearance, the schematic, and then the construction documents for that project. And this is the 567 extension around, where we want to extend it down to 144. And there is some question about why we're not going, continuing, and we're gonna eat a loop one quarter at a time. So we're just doing this section first. Again, it's for the environmental clearance, the schematic, and the construction documents, which is always the first thing you have to do. That could give you, if they came in and said, "Here's $68 million," we still wouldn't be able to do any of the spending of that money until we did the environmental assessment, the schematic, and the design. So we're just starting on all that. So Falls Creek FM 167 relief route, there is some tweaking that we're gonna be doing on this, because we had some meetings with the public, and they're concerned that, you know, why not widening 167? So we're gonna go back to Tech dot. We're gonna have a conversation with them, and we're gonna see what the viability is, feasibility of widening or improving 167, and then we'll go back to the community and say, "Hey, look, we're gonna try to fix existing first, and then look to that in the future." So there may be some tweaking on this one, based on what Tech dot tells us. Okay, so this is the SH 171 at the railroad. This was the only, one of the only projects Creston submitted, and if you've been out there, that road crosses a railroad at a skew. All we're gonna be doing is doing the engineering to get it to be a 90-degree, and then we will apply for either a railroad grant or a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant and get it funded. But you gotta have it designed to do that. Okay, so Strouts Creek connectivity, this is a multi-use project. It's to make some connections in this a part of Precinct 1, but it's also to raise some of the low-water crossings up out of the, not completely, but raise them up higher, so that when it floods, these communities aren't completely cut off for periods of time. So it's a connection, and it's a weather-related connectivity project. And again, we're doing the engineering and the environmental clearance on it. Mitchell Bend. So Mitchell Bend is an ability to get another way across the Brazos River and to tie it into the network in the county, and to give those people in that little southeastern part of the county an ability to get somewhere in the county without having to go out of the county, if that makes sense, because the river keeps them from doing that without having to go all the way south. Misty Meadows Extension, this was just an extension, because there's a high school, a lot of stuff going on out there, and we're trying to get those neighborhoods a better connection to the schools that are in that area. And one of the more difficult ones that we're gonna try to do is the pecan plantation south access, south. And apparently, before my time, there was a drill, emergency drill for Glen Rose and Power Plant, and half the people in that area had to go towards the power plant to evacuate. And so the county was looking to find a way to get a way out without having to go towards the problem. And so this was in their thoroughfare plan. We have, we've done similar projects to this elsewhere in other counties, and so we have a concept that we're gonna use with Metropolitan Planning Organization, where we build a bridge and the connectivity using non-federal, non-state, regional, local funds. And then certainly, last but not least, and this is one we're gonna eat one chunk at a time, we're gonna environmentally clear the whole corridor in this old Granbury Road, and we're gonna clear it completely. And then as we get it complete, cleared, then we'll come back, work with Granbury, work with the county, work with our stakeholders, and determine what sections of that road need to be constructed in the most timely manner. So clear it all, and then build it as you need it and/or can afford it. And Early voting. I'm not telling you how to vote. I'm just telling you that you can vote at the Hood County NX1 through now and the next couple of weeks. And then when you get that downloaded, you can actually read where the actual polling locations are. And I wanna back up, and let me see something. Of course, you can barely see it, but when you get it on the website, down in the right-hand corner, there's a QR code. Well, you can see it right there. If you go and take that QR code, it takes you right to the county's website, where all of this material is available to you, the thoroughfare plan, the jail expansion financial analysis, and the county's bond council financial advisors' analysis on the impact of the tax rate. So it's all there, and we drive people to that website. And now, I'm sure I didn't... So right now, I didn't point it out, or maybe I did, the 144 377 is now in the November-December, did I say that November-December 26 timeframe? Okay. Now, questions?
Let me provide an update. I met with Tech dot in Fort Worth yesterday. They plan on advertising for bids on November 26th of next year for the breakout project, which is great news. The challenge for all the utilities in that area are to be moved in time for that to begin. So we plan on advertising to move our utilities that are in the way for water and sewer on November 1st of this year, and we plan to have that project complete by October of next year. And that meets their guidelines, and so we're excited about that. So that's good news for us, that we're finally there. We've got a couple more easements to gather, but they have done all their acquisition.
Yes.
And so they're ready to move forward, and wanted to have that timing meeting with us, and we're all on the same page, and the funding is in place for the breakout project. And thank you, John, for helping us get that funding.
Yes, sir.
We relied on you a great deal for that. We appreciate it. And of course, everybody working together, sending a unified message to Tech dot, to the commissioners in Austin, that this is the project we want, helps as well. If we send a mixed message, that we don't agree on whatever projects we're working on, it won't happen. I've seen them take their money and take it to a community where they were in agreement. So it's real important that we agree to move forward, and obviously, if... Well, I'll stop editorializing and just thank you for your help. So we may have some questions up here for you, if you can handle them, so.
Yes. Mr. Overdue, go ahead.
Mayor. So, John, first of all, thank you for you and your team putting all this together. This is a massive project, and I'm sure that the county could not have done this without your help, so thank you so much for that. When I look at this, I see a lot, I mean, a lot of the roads are already there, but there are some roads that we're obviously extending and making new roads. But are there safety issues that this is gonna help create or eliminate some of the safety issues with the current roads?
So our intent is, you know, if we can add capacity to these roads, if we can make the, a lot of the intersections in like 144 carry more traffic with the innovative designs, we found that the EMS responses are quicker, the ambulances are quicker, you are able to get to police responses faster. So part of the safety issue on these roadways is to increasing not only their throughput, but their predictability and reliability for your fire, police, ambulance, and EMS services. That they, we hear a lot from them when we do our outreach, that congested roads are just as dangerous as smoking. I don't know.
Mr. Allen?
John, thank you again for coming here today. I wanted to know, what are the benefits of doing a jail expansion now versus doing it later?
So last year, the, I think the history is on the jail that they were really gonna try to go big, but when you did the calculations, what it was costing the county, it didn't make sense. It didn't pan out financially. But subsequent to that, the county has come up with a more judicious use of redoing and reimagining the jail. And also concurrent was that Johnson and Ehrath County increased their rates for what they charged daily for their inmates, and it was without notice. And so just by taking that one calculation, and what those two counties calculated their new rate to be, and you extrapolate that out over the 20-year period, it was clear to the county that was not sustainable, because increases, they can, basically, once they got you, they're, pardon the pun, they're holding you hostage, right? Or holding you prisoners. So when the county asked a county company to come in and take that information and give us a sweet spot on what it is. So the benefits are, we don't have to transport our inmates into other counties, which is a safety issue for both the law enforcement and the public. The cost is saved, because you're housing them, and that calculation includes the future growth of needing new jailers, the cost of feed them and all that. That's in that 178. So when they did the math, they saw that it was gonna save the county over that 20-year period, 42 million bucks. It was really something that they felt they had to do, just for the taxpayers.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Gordon.
I noticed that the 377 is not listed on the road bond program. Is there a reason why?
Yeah, then that, we, when we first put this out, that was the first question we got like 20 times from everybody, is our worst problem isn't showing up on the list. So you guys are idiots. Y'all can edit that out. But the reality is, is what we've done, and we went and met with those people on the 167 bypass, and that's what their argument, and we pulled up all the incredible work that Granbury and Tech dot and the NPO has been doing, and we showed them the plan that we have, and that not only is it a good plan, but we have one of the projects coming out of the ground in about a year, and that there is already a path forward on that. And now the county wants to come and build on that success, that the county and that the city and Tech dot has done on 377 itself. So it's not there, because it was such a big issue that the city and the NPO and Tech dot, y'all took the bull by the horns, and we have a really solid plan that's gonna deliver that project. And if we need help in the future after the first breakout, if we're successful with the bond program and the voters trust the county, we can always be there for the next phases as well.
Mr. Woodley.
What is the county's current debt service, and how do these bonds add to the debt service?
Okay, so I've done 14 road bond programs over about a 30-year period, and the counties have been in various disarray, or various ranges of financial stability. This is the first time I've ever been at a county where, when we went in to talk to them about their debt picture, they said that they were gonna make a $2.6 million payment next February, and they were gonna be completely out of debt. And I've never had a county that was in that position. And so your INS that's currently baked into your tax rate is covering debt service that will go to zero in February. So if the voters do end up voting in the affirmative on these bond programs, the county will be able to issue, probably, they'll need to issue all the 24 for the jail, because you gotta have all of it to build the jail, and then a small portion of the roads to get started on those environmental, and we'll be able to stay under the existing INS, so there won't be any change to your tax rate for what we're issuing, because we'll purposely stay under that. The difficult part is, is the legislature has changed the laws, as they do every two years, and it doesn't matter what the truth is. The very first six or seven words of the proposition on the ballot's gonna say in bold, all cap, "This is a tax increase." And so even though we're gonna use an INS that has no debt service associated with it, and it'll be starting in the tax rate, we have to say that. But the reality is, is the county has the financial conservative outreach that they can issue these bond programs without impacting the tax rate. And that's unheard of.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. John, what happens to the Tech dot funding that they committed to the Hood County roads if this bond doesn't pass?
Okay, so we're actually serendipitously timed this, because we just met with, Steve Alvis is gonna be the new highway commissioner, I mean chairman for the Highway Commission, and he was on his tour, and we met with him yesterday. And basically, his message was, now, it was over the top on his side, but he was saying that if you're not in the game with money, you're not gonna get, we have a reduction in funding that's coming out, and with the increased inflation, if you're not participating and partnering with the state financially, they've got plenty to do for those who will. So if the county doesn't, if the bond program doesn't pass, it'll be very difficult for any of these projects to get done, because if you look at the prices, our bond program, even if it passed, it wouldn't cover probably two of those projects that we had to pay for all by ourselves. So without the state and the federal government partnering, we can't do these. And without our share to step, get into the game, because we're competing against, internally, we're competing against Tarrant County, externally, we're competing against Dallas, Houston, Austin, and San Antonio, we won't be in the game. Austin and San Antonio, we won't, we won't be in the game. We'll just, we'll be on the sidelines.
Yes.
That's a great point and makes me have this question. If this bond fails, based on the legislative action that just took place in the 89th legislative session, what are the restrictions moving forward that will be placed on the county before they can have this bond issued on the ballot again? And what restraints are holding or higher elevation of voter passage? Are there, do you know that law?
I don't, but I will tell you that every time that the legislature's met in the last four sessions, they're making it harder and harder and harder for, for counties and entities to go out to, to raise debt. They're, they're just putting up more and more hurdles. And one of the things, in another county, they're, they're thinking about doing a bond program, and I told them that 26 is going to be better than 27 because 26, you're before the legislature, 27, you're going to have new rules. They haven't gotten better in the last four sessions, so you can only assume they're going to get worse.
I remember a bill that was making it where, and I don't know the outcome of, of the final bill came out, but I remember that if you issued a, a call for a vote and the bond failed, it was like a three-year or a five-year cooling off period.
Yeah, that did not, that didn't pass.
Okay, good.
Yeah, no, that fortunately, and there also was a bill that didn't pass that was going to require a supermajority of two-thirds.
Yeah, that'll happen.
Now, most of my campaigns have been more than two-thirds, but it's getting harder. So, which, that's a whole other, other conversation is why the legislature seems to be wanting to strip the local government of any authority, but then giving them all the unfunded mandates to, to implement.
Mr. Rodriguez?
John, there's a, there's a big difference when it comes to financing bonds between the city and the county. I just, I just can't, you got to go before the voters with the county bonds and, and for the city, it's, it's a little bit different, isn't it?
Well, we, I think, I think I prefer to go before the voters because if they, if they say yes, then you, there's no, there's no equivocation about what they want. And, and I've been saying this, and that's self-serving because I'm in the business, but there isn't anything that affects quality of life worse than crappy roads, right? It doesn't, you, you can have the greatest job in the world, but if you got to commute for an hour and you got to drive on 377 like that, that just sucks the marrow out of your bones. So, transportation is a quality of life issue. I've said that all my, all my life, and I think voters understand that transportation isn't a privilege, it's a necessity. And so, you know, hopefully though, the voters will see, I'm not advocating, I'm just pointing out the positive side only.
John, thank you, and I'm not going to cut off the questions, but I just want to, you know, make the comment here that yes, it says in big bold letters, this is a tax increase. And yes, that has to be, that has to be addressed. But as you walk through the, the demographics there, and, you know, we talked about, well, it's different in the city, it's different here. We are county residents. Everyone that lives in the city is a county resident. Everyone that lives in the city will pay county taxes. That's why there's concern about, is this a tax increase? And, you know, and, and we pay city taxes and we pay school taxes. We pay all the taxes that are here. So, if it affects, if it affects the county, it affects easily 20% of the total population of the county. And like, you know, like you see just driving in here today, we, we hear about this every day because it is an unsafe environment out there when you get on to 377. If you're in an accident and the ambulance takes over 30 minutes to get to you, it's not good.
So, like I say, the county has the ability to feather it in on the roadside because we're having a conversation in another county where they're, they're thinking they want to issue twice as much as what they need from a bond program that passed in 21. And I'm telling them, you can't spend that money that fast on a federal process because the game's rigged against you. You, you, the time it takes to get these things done, you don't want to be sitting on a lot of issued debt, but you're just waiting to use. So, we feather in the issuances only when we need them and we keep it under those, those issues. We've had, we've had times where the county actually said, look, this may be a three cent over a 20, over a 10-year period, a three cent increase in your INS side of your tax rate. And four years later, we did another bond program and we came back and said, we know we told you three cents, but it ended up only being three quarters of a penny that we needed to cover that whole bond program. So, roads can be done very prudently through your, your, your tax program. We can hit any mark you need to hit.
Mr. Wadley, go ahead.
How are the roads prioritized? And I guess my thought process is, old Gran, their old Granberry Road improvements, to me, are going to be real beneficial for the entire county.
Absolutely.
When they're doing the 377 project to have a route. The bridge over the river benefits a portion of pecan plantation. I'm not slighting those folks, but.
Sure.
It's, it's a, because some people still use the front and back gate because it's closer for where they live.
Right.
It only benefits just a, a small amount, and a bridge is real expensive. Again, I just, I just.
Old Granberry, Old Granberry Road is going to be in, in the top first issuance regardless because it's Old Granberry Road, and you're exactly right. Our intent is to get ahead of it so that when those other phases come on on 377, you have somewhat of a, of a release valve on Old Granberry Road. But the answer to that question technically is, if it passes in November, sometime around February, March, we'll know what we know, and then we will look at what it does to the tax rate. They'll give me a number and say, this is what we think we can issue, stay under that INS number for debt service, and then we'll prioritize. And remember, some of these, the 125 million, you only need three or four million to get started on a, and I know it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not for roads, to start the environmental clearance document. So, the environmental assessment in the schematic is only about 3% to 4% of the total cost of the project. So, and we may have 17 million in a bond program to do the EA schematic and PSNE, 8% of that, or 75% of that 17 million is for construction document that you don't do for the first 18 months to 24 months because you're clearing the document. So, we feather it in. So, I, I'm thinking that we'll be able to get probably half of those projects on that list started in the first issuance because the, the advanced planning is what it's called, is the cheapest part of the whole project. And Old Granberry Road, although it was last on the list, it's first in everybody's heart. And that's all we've heard about is Old Granberry Road. So, the rest of these will, we'll try to try to prioritize them by geography, right? Because everybody wants to see something in their area you go, but mostly it's going to be what the county can afford at that time and what projects are cog-tails as they want us to do. On the on-system projects, we'll let TechStop set that priority because they're, it's their roads. And if we try to do something they don't want to do, it just makes it difficult. Now, I want to say one other thing. When the Hilltops, the financial advisor for the county, ran the calculations for the impact of the bond program over a 20-year period, they assumed the tax, the interest rate at July plus 25 basis points, and then over, we would issue through 2030, they increased it to a full one and a half, 150 basis points over that period of time. Since July, we've had 50 basis points reduction in the interest rate. So, instead of it going up, it's going down. So, all of our assumptions, it said, we might have a minor impact to your tax rate in the out years. We're already starting now further, closer, way ahead of the curve based on the interest rates just since we made the assumptions. So, everything's going the right way.
Are the commissioners unanimous on these bonds? Are they're all in favor of it?
They all voted 5-0 to issue, to call the election on August 12th. So, yes, sir, I would say the, they're all, and, you know, they all got their own personalities, so part of my job is counseling, you know, so we just kind of keep everybody swinging the bat on the same side of the plate.
Yeah, I, I understand the, you know, the dynamics that you have there, but I want, I want to go back to as, as each, everybody's tried to find something that's in their area. The city represents 20% of the population.
Yes, sir.
Of the county, and Old Granberry Road's going to fit right in there at the top.
I'm, I'm, I'm not worried at all that Old Granberry's not going to be one of the first issuance projects we do because we have to. It's the, the environmental document on that will take us three years to do, and we needed to start it, we needed to start it three years ago.
Yeah.
That, that one's, that one's a no-brainer.
Yeah. Gentlemen, any other questions about the jail specifics, the roads? John, Chris?
You know, I want to acknowledge the fact that, that the county adopted our master thoroughfare plan as part of theirs. That shows a great amount of cooperation that we have that's not perceived by the public. When we have a chance to brag about your local agreements and what we're successful at, I think we should. They're working with us to try to figure out how to address the traffic needs that we all experience in our county. And together, the city and the county are working together to resolve this issue, evidenced by them hiring you and TMP to work through the process. And so, it's exciting to see the progress that we're making, and I can only hope that everybody in this room will go out and vote and vote your heart, what's best for the county. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
John, thank you so much for coming down and outstanding presentation.